Good afternoon. The Committee on Water and Land is proceeding with this hearing notice of Wednesday, January 31st at 1:00 P.M. And it's Aloha Day to all of you, including Zoom land. We'd like to at least recognize that we are on Zoom, Zoom land today as well. And we are, for all the testifiers, just to let you know, including those that are on Zoom, we ask to stand on your written testimony. If your oral testimony is different from the written testimony, the time limit for each testimony will be two minutes. The content, including the hearing notice, copies of the bill and the testimony can be found on our legislative website. The live video stream, as well as an archive of this hearing, can be found on the Senate's YouTube channel. Decision making will occur after we hear from all of the testifiers as well. Members, thank you for being here as well. We'll proceed with SB 2297. And this is relating to the Natural Resource Management. And this clarifies that the Board of Land and Natural Resources Authority shall supersede the Mauna Kea stewardship and oversight authority for all lands designated under the State Conservation District. It clarifies further that the Natural Resource Management Enforcement and Emergency Response of the Mauna Kea lands shall remain the responsibility of the Division of Conservation and Resources Enforcement of the DLNR, as we know as DOKIR. We'll proceed with the testifiers, DLNR. Kevin Moore?
Good afternoon, Chair Vice Chair members. The department will stand on its testimony. Offer comments.
Thank you very much. Okay, John Komeji, Mauna Kea stewardship and oversight authority.
I might say just three sentences in addition to our testimony to kind of further explain. Good afternoon, Chair, members of the committee. I'm John Komeji, Chair of the MKSOA Authority. So we oppose this bill. And the reason we oppose it is that we believe that the legislature last year tried to create an independent body and include voices that previously were not heard. And to do that, the legislature in its wisdom gave those members a vote, a final vote on whatever happens on the Mauna. And what the reason why we object to this bill is that we would be taking away that vote from those people that didn't have voice and make them basically an advisory board, which I don't think was the intent of the legislature. So for that reason, we oppose the bill. Thank you.
Okay. And just a question, members. Chair will allow you to ask questions after each speaker if you wish as well. So even though that the Constitution protects these lands, particularly the Conservation District lands, as we know today, you still oppose the lands.
Yes.
I mean, the jurisdiction that this should remain with the state.
Right. We believe that we can hold that responsibility as well as the DLNR. And we take very seriously what the legislature included in the original Act 255 about maintaining the environment and maintaining conservation lands.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Any further questions? Let's see. Office of Hawaiian Affairs. Aloha.
Mahalo for taking time.
Aloha, Chair Vice Chair members of the committee. I come before you as a Director of Advocacy for the Office of Hawaiian Affairs. And I stand on our written testimony, but I did want to highlight that we appreciate the way in which this measure makes clear that the Board of Land and Natural Resources does not relinquish its kuliana. And want to mention that we do, we do offer comments in having the committee consider that this kuliana be non-transferable and affirmative for, for the rights of the Mauna and, and all of the public uses that are to be done on that mountain. Mahalo. I'm here to answer any questions.
Okay. There's a recommendation that you state with regards to the language change. And that you, one second. That we probably look at the recommendations in your communication, adding language that makes clear that the BLNR has an affirmative and non-transferable duty to uphold and protect the traditional and customary rights of Native Hawaiians as articulated in Article 7 of the State Constitution. And that's your ask, that if we can add that to the measure. Is that correct?
Yes. Yeah. Or, I mean, it could be shorter than that, just in the early part, that the Board and Department shall maintain. And then after that, that these obligations be non-transferable and affirmative.
Okay. All right.
Chair?
Yes. Senator Favela?
You know, question, you know, when this bill was going through the Senate and the House, were you working with OHA?
I was not, no.
You was not? Did OHA offer any comments during the time of this bill going through? Do you remember the comments?
I remember some of them. I will try to recollect the specifics of it. I know there was concerns about the authorities, about the relinquishing of the authority to the Board of Land and Natural Resources. I know that there were also some concerns about a lack of representation. I know that up until the point of the conference committee, that the Office of Hawaiian Affairs was on the, was listed as a member of the authority. And I do know that there were still some concerns about the ways in which the authority would be able to uphold the obligations, as is clarified in this bill.
So you're telling me, you guys are telling me, oh, this is the reason why this came up? OHA been a part of protecting indigenous rights, Hawaiian rights, whatever you want to call it. And failed on the Mauna. You guys always worry about not getting your fair share from the university and the state, but not really caring about how the Mauna is being treated historically and culturally. Now, Office of Hawaiian Affairs supposed to be the first thing to do is perpetuate the lifestyle of our people. So you guys try to tell Hawaiians or the guys who's going to be, come and protect the Mauna on this advisory board, they're not going to be able to, which you guys don't know because you can never get one chance. That they're not going to be able to do. But again, don't, don't tell me about BLNR and DLNR because they're not very good stewards of the land neither. Bani and Drive never fall apart yesterday. Parts of the Mauna that being neglected, the people of the Mauna that protected, that goes over there, they never protect them. See, this is about territorial and rights. And now, because the authority is forming, almost ready to go, everybody wants to take it apart. It wasn't a good thing, none of the senators, none of the representatives, and even the governor would have vetoed. It wasn't a good idea to give an opportunity for somebody else to help protect the Mauna. Now, if this bill says that DLNR and all these other guys that have in the conservation lands to maintain them and upkeep them, then that's fine. But you can certainly see the authority, of the authority that was putting in there because certain people don't want the authority there. And I understand you guys suit going with this authority and whatnot, but that should not cloud the vision of what was the authority was put in there in the first place. You guys know what was the reason for the Mauna Kea Authority Board?
My understanding, not being with the Office of Hawaiian Affairs, but following the proceedings as a native Hawaiian, was that the intent of the legislature was to have better representation of native Hawaiian voices and a path toward better stewardship.
So by having the authority to represent and have the voices of the people of Hawaii, that everybody went and considered. Like this room would have been packed if this had been noted days ago, but it wasn't. But that's what I'm saying. So this kind of stuff like this, I mean, don't get me wrong. I respect everybody in this room. But to try to take away the authority right now, that we just got it going, and they're getting hard time put together the board because of Sunshine Law and all the rules and bylaws that we put in place? To have you guys come and testify in comments or want to put in comments to making sure that the people that's supposed to be taking care of the land that wasn't doing a good job. And that's what disappoints me. Because I have my issues with OHA, and this is the reason why. Is because when it comes to help the people of Hawaii, they go against them. And that's what you're doing. You're going against the people of Hawaii. And whether you believe it or not, maybe not you because you knew them, they are. $27 million was spent for Kaka'aku. How much of that one helped the native Hawaiian people, the people of Hawaii? Zero. So again, you're knocking down something that you guys don't even know if it's going to be a good part, if they're going to be a good partner, or if they can even do the job. At least let them try to do the job. If they fail, then come up with something. So that's it, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. You have someone sitting next to you.
Can I introduce?
Yes. And you need to speak into the mic.
Good afternoon, Chair. My name is Kurt Klein. I'm Board Counsel for Office of Hawaiian Affairs. And I'm here today just as, to advocate on behalf of Office of Hawaiian Affairs and to answer any questions that.
Do you have any questions that you might respond to? Senator Favela's comments?
Well, I, I listened to your comments, Senator. And it struck me as very important to, to really appreciate where, you know, where this started and, and what the ultimate end goal is with respect to respecting the mountain. You know, the Office of Hawaiian Affairs in 2017, we filed a lawsuit specifically for better management practices on the mountain. We've been litigating that lawsuit against multiple challenges by the state, the University of Hawaii, trying to get that lawsuit dismissed multiple times. And the goal of that lawsuit is not to line OHA's pockets with money. It's solely about getting prospective injunctive relief. Meaning that we're asked of court to order that things be done or not done with respect to the mountain. For instance, that appropriate surveys be conducted to identify cultural sites, religious sites on the mountain, so that we know how to protect those sites, to control access up to the mountain, who can go, who can, how, and how the telescopes, the observatories are treated after they're taken down, how the land is remediated. There's a giant aquifer on the mountain. There are chemicals that get put into the ground. The lawsuit was designed specifically so to respect the integrity of the mountain and the cultural practitioners who need to access the mountain in order to fulfill their traditional and customary rights and their religious beliefs as well. That's the point of the first lawsuit. Now, with respect to the current MKSOA.
The Office of Mauna Kea Management? The current one?
Yes, Chair.
Okay.
That authority, unfortunately, is unconstitutional. And we filed the lawsuit because we cannot support an authority, an agency up there that doesn't pass constitutional muster and it doesn't respect and fulfill the ceded, the obligations that the state owes under, under the Admissions Act. Those lands are special. They're ceded lands. And because those lands on the mountain are ceded lands, there are.
Excuse me. Are you referring to OAMKM or the Mauna Kea Authority? I think you did say.
I think, I think what he's trying to say, let me, let me finish. So I know the suit. No, no, let me finish because you guys getting confused. So I know the suit is because we don't want all the damages that the university did and all the desecration that they did to have the authority take and let them have, get off the hook. I know that's one of them. But why doesn't OHA don't reach out to the authority and combine forces to make sure that that doesn't happen? You guys use your guys' mana'o and share the mana'o with them and going forward. We understand we're not telling you not to sue, but to go ahead and saying that they cannot do certain things and you guys going to testify because it's better than these other guys taking on? It's different between the Constitution. And I understand the Constitution. But over here today, we're not talking about the Constitution on the, on the rights of OHA, on the protection of the land. What we're talking about is that if the authority has questions, whether it's EVs or whatever, they don't supersede the DLNR. They supersede them. So then, all, all the, all the time that we put this together was for nothing. All the senators that put this together trusting that they was going to be able to do these things once they up and running, but we shoot them in the feet before they even can move up. I understand, I understand what he's saying. Don't get me wrong. I already talked to some of the people in OHA. I understand what you guys try to say, that you don't want the university to get off the hook. Well, there's some, there's other ways that you guys can work on. He's saying that you guys just don't want to have the authority. Because if that's the case, like I said, you guys should have seen the governor. You guys should have talked to the AG, have the governor veto the bill. But the reason why this Mauna Kea Advisory Board is put together was one reason, one reason, to stop them from blocking the Mauna road.
Why don't you continue? Senator, let him continue his comments, please.
Okay. That was, that was the answer that he was going to give.
Okay.
Was about not giving the university points. So.
No, I, a lot's been said. And I think, you know, I take your comments seriously, Senator Favela. And, you know, I think part of the, part of the frustration I'm hearing is, what did OHA do or not do to prevent, you know, this Mauna Kea authority from going down the tracks? So we don't end up today trying to dismantle something that was intended to be productive? That's what I'm hearing. Now, I think OHA, OHA did take positions on, on the Mauna Kea authority in the past, Act 255. We put the, our, our testimony is in the record. We stand on our testimony. What happened though, was that when the bill was signed and it, and it was enacted, the purpose of the authority is purely to advance astronomy on the mountain. And so OHA cannot support that because it doesn't balance. The stated purpose of that bill is to further and advance astronomy on the mountain. There is no balance between astronomy, the cultural and, and religious practices of native Hawaiians on that mountain. So when you ask us, why don't we support it? What could we have done? Well, I think the bill needs to go. It may be a good blueprint. It might be a good starting point. And we appreciate the work, all the work that was done and all the heart that was put into trying to correct this problem. In the result, we tried to make a cake and we didn't quite get a cake. There's something, there's some ingredients missing out of that cake. What I'm trying to say is that the ingredients that are missing, a true advocacy voice on the mountain, along with all the other constitutional flaws with the way the bill is drafted and some of the technical aspects of it. But one of the main reasons is that there's just no, there's no native Hawaiian purpose on the mountain. And when you peel back all the layers of laws, you come back to Section 5F of the Admission Act, creates five trust purposes. One of those purposes of those ceded lands is for native Hawaiians. And the land is being privatized up there. And it's not being used to balance the interests of native Hawaiians along with the astronomy purposes. That's our point.
One question though, with regards to your last statement. It is in the Constitution with regards to the protection of the ceded lands that remains with BLNR.
The obligation.
Yes, yeah. Sure. Yes, yes.
Chair, the obligation was passed from the federal government to the state of Hawaii via the Admission Act. The state has a, has a trust obligation to carry out, to carry out and manage the ceded lands for five trust purposes. And one of those purposes.
And I, I agree with that because that's part of the U.S. contracts.
Yes.
As well. And that's why it retained all of the states in the United States, that jurisdiction of managing lands remain with the state. And that's why the Indians are under that same philosophy and management that it goes with the states of that particular area. I have, well, just, just to share with you. And so we're obligated, the state, the U.S. Constitution says that it, the lands division remains with the states. And that's where DLNR and the Board of Land and Natural Resources manages the Conservation District lands, which this bill does as well, unless you think differently. Yes. But I, you know, so not going further because we don't want to make, we don't want to get involved with anything with regards to the pending suit. So we'll just stick with what is our kuliana as far as the protection. I took, I've been sworn in for many years in my role as an elected official to uphold the U.S. Constitution and the Hawaii Constitution as well. And so that's where we're dealing with today. Thank you. Any further questions? Otherwise.
Yeah, so what he had said, I'm not sure if everybody was listening, on the, in trust of the trustee, no state own any of the land. None of them. It's in a trust. So again, regardless of the Constitution, on what entity of the state should be in trust of the land is still questionable. But again, taking away the strength of the people on the advisory board, what direction we going to go back in? Because I telling you right now, right here on TV, right now, right, let you guys, everybody in the room, there's no way I would ever support TMT. Ever. Ever. Okay? Just letting you know that. So this is the thing, why? Because all what you just said, those five things, where was OHA besides filing suits when these guys was trying to sneak up the mountain? Who was there? Was the protectors of the Mauna. Some of the protectors is on this advisory board. We wanted to empower them. That's the reason why this was created. Wasn't trying to take any power away from OHA or DLNR. But the advisory board was going to oversee everything. And of course, if they, just like the university, university have 50 years on the Mauna before they said they was not doing a good job. So these guys don't even have three years or two years. So why don't we let the thing transfer over and see how it is and then come back? I'm not telling you that I want the university to get away from the obligations of destroying the Mauna. No, I don't. But I don't want another entity coming in and they got to have to, this guy's got to ask this guy, and this guy's got to ask that guy's before you know it, and right back in the Senate again. Because that's what the university was about. How much, I ask you guys this question because I know because we went up there with Senator Kim. How much astronomers came out of University of Hawaii, Hilo, and of all the schools within Hilo and Kona? How much of them became astronomers, astronauts, scientists, all of those things?
You know, I actually don't know.
Yeah. The answer is no.
I have Senator, Senator.
They told us on the Mauna, when we went with Senator Kim, astronomers told us, they told them, they told the university for years to let the kids and the people come up there and see what they're doing to take ownership. The university said no. And that's the reason why we stay today. Not trying to take away OHA or DLNR and BLNR's thing was to give the people and empower them. And if they don't do a good job, then we back here again. See what I mean? But in the beginning, we shot.
Senator, Senator Favela, we have statistics. There is a report that was given with regards to the graduates, a number of graduates, and those that's already working in astronomy on Mauna Kea and on Haleakalaka, and those that are already at the universities.
What is the numbers?
I don't have it right now, but we do have, there are.
I'm not saying they're not up there, but there wasn't invited.
We'll get it to you. And we'll get it. We get it to all of you at our next meeting as well. And we'll share that with you. I think you probably have it.
Yeah, I think it's just my newness.
Yeah. Well, there, there are the reports that's out there as well. Yeah. Any further discussions with regards to OHA while they're here? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair.
We have communications from the University of Hawaii. And that, those were comments. Communications from Hawaii County Council, Sue Leloy in support, on behalf of the county council in support. IT is County of Hawaii County Council on Zoom.
They're not present on, present on Zoom, Chair.
All right. Thank you. We did receive a communication in opposition from Gerard Silva, who has been very active in these last several years in opposition of any legislation. Question, DOKIR. Senator Favela did bring up, made some comments with regards to the care of the mountain and responsibilities of DOKIR. Can you share with, with the committee as well and for those that are viewing, what does DOKIR do on the Mauna? And your responsibilities?
Yes, good afternoon, Chair, members of the committee. Jason Ridula, Enforcement Chief with the Division of Conservation and Resources Enforcement. So currently, DOKIR is the primary natural resources law enforcement agency at Mauna Kea, specifically in the forest reserves, the natural area reserve, and various other areas within the Conservation District and lands that DLNR manages in that area. So with that, we do enforce Title 12 HRS, our Conservation and Resources Enforcement laws. And we also enforce all other laws of the state when they become applicable. We are currently the, the primary law enforcement force for DLNR lands in that area. You know, I'm not certain how that's going to remain once the lands are transferred, if they are in fact transferred.
Okay. Is your jurisdiction over DHH lands that about the lands on Mauna Kea as well? Because there's portions of DHH lands that are up at the Mauna. You're responsible for those areas as well?
So with respect to the Department of Hawaiian Homeland's lands that are in that area, we are not the primary law enforcement agency for that. Our jurisdiction is primarily within the DLNR managed areas.
And the conservation lands?
Yes.
Thank you. Any questions from DOKIR? Senator Favela?
So you saying, okay, let's say you guys are not there. So, and the authority has an issue. They don't have the new law enforcement. They can go up there and enforce some of the things that they're going to be learning on the conservation lands? And the new law enforcement not going to be, if they have a problem on conservation land, that the law enforcement not going to go be up there? Because what I'm trying to explain to everybody is that we understand that you guys protect the land. It's not a problem. It's not a problem here. Problem is that you guys are going to oversee and overview and overrule the authority. Authority not seeing that you guys cannot maintain and do everything you guys doing now. They didn't say that you guys couldn't, even under the transfer. Never said that you guys are going to stop doing what you guys doing. The only thing it is, is that you guys going to have the authority over the authority. And that's the issue. They're not saying that you guys not can be in existent. They're not saying too not to continue in taking care of the land that you guys been taking care of all of this time. It's just that now, instead of having the university or whoever's over there at the time, you guys going to have the authority. So that's what I just don't understand. It's not that they're saying that you guys cannot do all the things that you guys been doing, questionable or not. They never said none of that, that you guys wasn't, wasn't doing either of that. But he's just saying that you guys don't want nobody telling you guys what for do. That's the thing. So you don't want a bunch of protectors telling you guys what for do. I'm not saying that's you, I'm just saying in general. And that's what this looks like. Is that they don't want the authority, who has a lot of protectors invested in the authority, be able to tell you what's happening on the mountain and they need help on enforcing. So that's why I look at it. That is nothing against you or your department, but I'm just saying, that's how they looking at it. You know, like I said, before I came here, before Senator, you know, he came talk to me, I had a lot of calls from Hilo. I was just wondering why they never having that notice? Then they would have had more people come for this. Because they have no problem with you guys doing your work. But then you guys going to have the authority over the authority. And that's the question. Thank you, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. We certainly respect your comments.
Thank you. Appreciate you.
But your duty is working with, under the jurisdiction of the BLNR and the DLNR.
Primarily, yes, ma'am.
On conservation lands?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right, just to make that clear. Okay, thank you very much.
The authority on account...
Sure, Sean.
Just one quick question, since what I said, how is you guys relationship, working relationship with DLNR and all?
Good. Working well with them. We're administratively attached with them, so we have to run through our budget requests and employment requests. So Chair of DLNR has been very helpful to us, the HR and administrative people have been very helpful.
So this, if you guys go according to what we had, if you guys authority, nothing ever changed then? Right? And on your, on the authority, if this wasn't this happening now, and you guys continuing on, would it change where you guys working?
If we stayed the same?
Yeah.
You know, it would be the same.
Yeah. Thank you.
With regards to the comments Senator Favela just raised, the Mauna Care Authority is exempt, Senator. They're exempt from Chapter 26-35 that examines them from the administrative supervision of the boards and commissions, just to add to that as well. Okay? Any further testimonies with regards to SB 2297? Okay? Hearing non...
Chair, can we go back? I have a question for OHA.
Sure.
Representative from OHA.
Thank you again for coming back to the table and for being here and for your testimony. So currently, right now, OHA has an active lawsuit against the constitutionality of the Mauna Care Stewardship Authority, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And it was based upon the reasonings that you stated in your oral testimony here today? Is that correct?
It's based on all the reasons that we've put actually in the complaint that we filed.
Okay, understood. Now, I want to go back, and I don't know if you were at OHA at the time in 2022, I wasn't here at the legislature, but I pulled up OHA's testimony from March 22, 2022, which was on House Bill 2024, which became Act 255. In OHA's testimony, the objection was having DLNR control it, even though the Mauna Care Stewardship Authority is still an attached agency. So is OHA still an objection to it still being attached to DLNR? Because that was the original objection back in the letter in March 22 of 2022. I know you don't have that letter in front of you, but it does state that in that letter, if you have time to go back to it. And I was just curious if that position has changed.
I'll let you, you want to start?
So I think the short answer is yes, it has changed to some extent because the bill changed between the testimony and the final version that passed. There were actually fairly significant, one of the, I mean, the easiest and most obvious significant change was the removal of OHA from the authority.
I see.
But there were other things, right? That was not the...
OHA was part of the working group to create the authority, is that correct?
I believe so, yes.
Okay.
So there, so I think the short answer is yes, it has changed. I'd have to go back and look and how that tracks with the complaint that Kurt is talking about. But it has changed to some extent, yes, in large part because the bill changed, and what was passed changed.
Okay, understood. No, thank you for that clarification. Thank you, Chair.
Okay. However, though, not as the working group, because I think the original bill did include you folks as part of
Yes.
the authority.
It did.
But am I, I wasn't part of the conference committee, but, so, when did you folks, OHA was removed, was the, before the final version then?
So my understanding...
So you were taken out of the authority?
My understanding from the research that I've done on the issue is that we were taken out during conference committee. So my understanding is, if I'm remembering correctly from my research, the, one of the testimonies that you brought up was one of the last testimonies that...
Before conference.
Before conference. And so I think at that point, there were, there was some work being done by my predecessors to find ways to sort of address some of the issues, particularly in the 2017 lawsuit, and that during conference committees, there was pretty significant changes, one of which being that OHA was removed from the authority.
Now, as a follow-up, Chair, if I may?
Sure, sure.
I know we're past bill introduction deadline, but if OHA was included, would that change your perspective on the current suit that you have?
I'm gonna probably defer to Kurt on this one as our counsel.
I know you're not even coming because there's an active lawsuit, but if that were different, like how would OHA approach that?
Chair, Senator?
Can you state your name again?
Sure, sure, Chair. Kurt Klein, Board Counsel, Office of Hawaiian Affairs.
K-L-I-N-E?
K-L-E-I-N.
Thank you.
Maybe I can answer your question indirectly?
Sure.
Which is, there are still constitutional problems with Act 255 irrespective of whether or not OHA is included as a member on the authority.
Understood, yeah. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any further questions? Okay. Hearing non, thank you very much.
Thank you.
IT, we don't need to go into discussions on the measure. Chair would prefer just going into the decision-making. My recommendation is to defer the decision-making till Monday, and that's February 5 at 1:00 PM. I'd like to extend communications with OHA on the specific language that we need to make sure that we want to include in this measure. And so, giving time for you to add a little more clarity to your recommendations on the language that I'd like to add to the measure that is recommended by you, but it's a little unclear, and we need a little more specific. So we'll defer decision-making on SB 2297 to Monday, February 5 at 1:00 PM in this room, to 2:09. Okay? And thank you for spending your time this afternoon. Thank you, members.